Today is Tuesday, January 9th, 2024. This meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcasts. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of this meeting. We're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And then after we say the Pledge of Allegiance, somebody asks us to continue standing because the FMS choir is here today and they're going to sing the National Anthem.
Do you have another selection?
We do.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, please be seated.
Thank you, I was glad. Thank you.
Thank you so much, the FMS choir. Everybody, great job. Alright, so we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Everything listed here in the consent agenda was distributed at the DANSKA meeting. Does anyone have any requests for something to be removed from the consent agenda? And discuss it over a second. Okay, so we'll pull over the minutes to set the date, 2023. So much. Second. All those in favor. Then we have a pool of people.
Make that motion.
Yeah, they're both, sorry, I used to consent agenda. All those in favor. Aye. And do we have anyone who still have delegations? So moving into our business, we have the student goals. The goals were reviewed by the subcommittee with Dr. Bailey, District One and I. We do need to vote for those goals. Do you have anything to add?
No, they are listed in the memo and then you can, they're listed out in the templates that talks about the strategies to get there, the actions. But unless anybody has any specific questions, there's similar goals, there's four of them, similar to what we've done in the past with the student earning goal, a professional practice goal, and then two leadership goals for district improvement.
I guess it might be good to just know that we did establish a subcommittee to review the goals. I think we made a little bit of progress in terms of adding some quantitative measures across some of those strategies. Obviously, I think as any evaluation is, it's somewhat subjective, but we could add some quantitative pieces. I think it was good and I think we continue to work on defining, but I certainly support.
And the other thing that we added, if you look on the template, is a lot of links. So when we listed things, that was a new thing that we added as a result of the subcommittee is just linking the actual documents to that template document.
So if I may have a motion, please, to approve the superintendent's goals as listed. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. And we'll move into your report, Dr. Bailey.
And just to review, those are two-year goals. At the end of this year, we'll do a formative assessment, which is sort of a check-in, and then at the end of next year will be my summative. But I just wanted to start the meeting, I don't know if you knew this, but it's School Board Appreciation Month. So we just found that out today, and if you drove in and saw the sign outside, your picture is probably displayed that we wanted to show our gratitude to our school committee because I don't know if the public realizes this, but you don't get paid to do this. And it's not just once a month, you're coming to a lot of subcommittee meetings, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that you do. So I just wanted to publicly say thank you, as well as put you out on our billboard outside. I just wanted to see if you noticed, so thank you for everything you do. Okay, first thing on the agenda, we have Mr. Shambrun with us today, and he has a report on the FMS music program. And before he starts, I just want to say that, as you know, we're using Word docs now. Stadi next month will link everything to my goals. We didn't do that yet because we're getting in the swing of things here, but I see that Mrs. Sylvia is up at the podium, so she's probably going to be saying a few words with Mr. Shambrun.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, Dr. Bailey. So, Mr. Shambrun, we had a nice presentation, thank you for rallying the troops to come.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Will this play the video? Please, this was in October. Sorry, you want to speak to this one?
So, the Peter R. Marsh Foundation is a foundation that awards grants to middle schools and high schools for this express purpose of reaching out to community members and getting students who are involved in music programs to participate with gratitude and kindness. See, there's a little description on the bottom there. So we were awarded a $1,000 grant by the Peter R. Marsh Foundation. We received that payment in December and we've already used it to visit Whalers Cove, so that some of the qualifications for that, you can use the money for outside performances at senior facilities or in your town at senior facilities, or any performance venue where seniors are specifically the target audience. Or you could also use it for music specifically targeted to senior citizens. So we are ordering some music from the, the suggestion was 30s and 40s, but I'm going to push it to 50s and 60s. So we're going to get some music from the 50s and 60s so that we can perform a few more times. We're going to visit Whalers Cove again in the spring, and we always do a performance at the Acushna Public Library, it's an evening performance. And we have invited the Council on Aging to participate in a few different things, but as they're going through a change of directors, we're kind of in flux waiting for them to sell. So once we have that, that'll be one of our performances. And at the end of the year, there's a presentation that I have to do for them, and I will gladly share that with you. So it's a huge, huge benefit to us because it's $260 to walk out the door wherever we go. Whalers Cove is like an eight-minute bus ride, so 260 bucks for 15 minutes on a bus is a little scary. So we use that for both of those, and we will also hopefully be able to transport some seniors either from there or from the Council on Aging here for the Drama Club or for our spring concerts.
Thank you for applying for that. And you can see the alignment to the district strategic plan, strengthening partnerships with parents and the larger community, and that grant does help us with that immensely. So in October, our band went out to AES, and they performed at the Vocav Parade, very fun times. I'm sorry, I don't have videos for everything. In November, they performed at Pollock for the Veterans Day Ceremony. Most of those individuals were here tonight performing. In December, the Town Sing-Along, Junior District Auditions, the FMS and AES Concerts, the Whalers Cove Visit, Toys for Tots Event, we too have pictures. They performed at the Dartmouth Mall on Sunday. The Whalers Cove Performance. The Taking and Outing, January 21st, they're performing on the ice at the Province Bruins. Oh, thank you. You want to tell us about this?
Sure.
Yes. The Semswa District in February, Junior District, they auditioned in December.
Junior Districts and Junior Semswa are honor ensembles that our students can audition for. It's the equivalent to like a travel team or an all-star team. So the students have to want to go do it, they have to practice on their own, it's the auditions are on Saturdays. Junior Districts was the first Saturday in December. We had four students audition, three of them were accepted, that means their scoring on the rubric was higher than however many other students. We have Semswa auditions coming up in the first Saturday in February, we have at least four or five who are auditioning, and it's a great way for the kids to kind of stretch their musical legs and see what else is out there outside of our little town. Not that our little town is lacking anything, but it's huge, big world up there, especially when it comes to singing with large groups, lots more people, more complex literature with somebody, a conductor, usually a college professor or composer. So you're getting a whole different view from the podium, and the kids get a huge benefit from that.
And yes, we will have a mattress fundraiser in March, and the funds for that really do help pay for the end-of-year trip that they take to another competition at another high school, and they compete against other middle schools from the state of Massachusetts. All-City Band Concert at New Bedford High, they have done for the past, you know, couple of years, for a while. And it's about two of three practices, or is it just one practice with all the middle schools before the performance?
It's just one.
Just one practice with the New Bedford middle schools before the performance. And in May, we will have spring concerts here at both schools, the Semswa Festival, the concert at the Acushna Public Library, another trip to Whalers Cove and Music in the Parks. June, they perform at the eighth-grade promotion, fourth-grade sign-ups. Questions?
So I love this program, I love music and the drama and all of the arts. So I would just say to recommend to the eighth-grade parents, selecting a high school for their students, if they truly are into the arts, to pay attention to what high school they're selecting, because there are some high schools out there that don't, that won't allow certain classes to be taken with the arts, and there'll be conflictions junior and senior year. So I just want to make that clear to parents, to really investigate what high school your student's going with if you are really into the arts.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, I'm really proud, I'm always proud of our students, and Mr. Shambrun, I appreciate everything that you do with them by the presentation tonight. As you know, I try to feature your things on Facebook, but I'm just giving you a heads up, I'm going to have somebody in touch with you because I want this to go out to the greater community. So I think the greater community needs to know about the Peter Marsh Foundation, the grant, as well as all the great things you're doing with the kids and the community, out in the community. I think it's wonderful, so thank you so much, I really appreciate it, and I know the school committee does as well. So just, you might get an email or a phone call, I'm just giving you a heads up, because I think this is the good news that our community needs to know about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next we have, I'm going to call Patrick McIntyre to the podium. He is going to introduce the presenter from TRAIN, and as you know, we've been talking about this in our steering committee, we've been discussing it, but the energy savings performance contracting presentation, and this is, you know, a lot about the air quality, et cetera. So I know that Mr. McIntyre will come up, introduce the representative from TRAIN.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey, the school committee. So just to backtrack a little bit here, so TRAIN was one of the three organizations that we had in to evaluate the elementary school when everything unfolded next door. You know, we selected them off the state contract for the service, along with the other vendors, where we looked at mechanical issues, environmental issues, building, so forth. So along the way, we stayed in touch with all three, you know, companies, as you will, and we worked with the steering committee. And the consensus, the latest consensus is, let's look at an audit that will provide a bigger picture than just to an HVAC system sitting in one school. Let's get a bang for our buck and do as much as possible to make sure that we eliminate, you know, or gather information on what costs are associated with our buildings while being able to eliminate what we think, eliminate the humidity issues next door with the HVAC project. So my time with TRAIN goes back to the Masbro Annual Institute, where Morgan and a superintendent from a neighboring town presented to a large group of individuals, and they discussed, you know, how the performance contracting and EMS services could save, you know, a town or a school district millions of dollars through energy efficiencies and renewal programs. So this is tailored a little bit towards that, but we're not losing sight or vision of the goal, which is addressing next door's humidity issue. It just all comes together at a comparable fixed cost to other solutions and provides us with a lot more information. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce you to Morgan Paris, account executive from TRAIN.
Thank you very much. Thank you to Mr. McIntyre, thank you to the superintendent, and thank you to the school committee, Madam Chair, for having me. As Patrick already mentioned, my name is Morgan Paris, I'm an energy services account executive with TRAIN. I work primarily in the public sector with schools and communities like yourself. So this is what I do pretty much every day, is work with communities on making their buildings safer, healthier, and more efficient. It's kind of a holistic perspective of buildings in the indoor environment. So, oh, my agenda actually isn't showing up. Well, I'll give you a quick snapshot, because we're going to review typical existing challenges of a community and why people enter into these types of agreements, what a project through this type of agreement would look like, what are the traditional scopes of work, why people have worked with TRAIN in the past, why they selected TRAIN as their provider. And then lastly, what's a streamlined timeline look like for a project of this nature? So just to start off with the typical existing challenges, oh, and by the way, I'm completely okay with people shouting out questions during the presentation, you don't need to wait to the end, if you have a burning question, feel free to ask me. And I am a one-woman show today, but if I can't answer your question, I'm taking it and I'll follow up with you later. So.
Sorry, I just want to interrupt you.
Yeah.
So I just want to apologize, when they sent over the PowerPoint presentation, we converted it to Google Presentations, there might have been some issue, so I'm just giving Morgan an alternative in case it happens on another slide.
No worries. We can, we can make it work.
Thank you, sorry.
No, you're totally fine. So typical existing challenges of schools and of communities like yourself, like I said, number one is really growing capital needs, right? It's HVC systems, it's building infrastructure, it's mechanical systems, and control systems. Those are kind of the top bucket that I see most frequently. After that, it's what falls along with those types of growing capital problems is visibility concerns, not being able to see problems as they arise in your mechanical systems and your existing infrastructure. After that, it's what do I do with these buildings that are falling out of disrepair when I need to make them last for years and years and years, right? The best-case scenario, I think everyone, is to have a brand-new building, right? That's what everyone wants, that's what everyone likes to hear. But in these days, it's more difficult to make that happen, right? We want to make buildings last longer, we want to make them sufficient, healthy, have good indoor environments where the lighting levels are appropriate, and the equipment is quiet, and students can learn, and teachers feel comfortable. So that's what we do, we come in and we make these buildings last for many, many years. A key aspect of upgrading infrastructure and mechanical systems is creating that optimized indoor air quality, indoor air quality environment, right? It also sometimes, a couple of things, those two bullets at the bottom are kind of ancillary to the other growing capital challenges that a lot of districts face, and that's pressure to decarbonize, to electrify systems, create carbon paths to carbon neutrality. And then lastly, also falls along with that kind of energy efficiency perspective, is taking advantage of the money that's out there when it comes to, you know, state and local utility incentives. So communities typically have some form of grouping of these, right? Not always one or the other, and not always all of them. But I think some of these seem to fit with what Acushna is looking for. So how do communities do this? Communities do this through what is really an alternative contracting method to what you're probably most familiar with, which is Chapter 33, Year 149. And so this alternative contracting method is enabled by actually MGL Chapter 25A 11I. It's a special law that's specifically for performance contracting. It's supported by the Department of Energy Resources, and it is where you choose one firm to work with on everything in a project, soup to nuts. It's development, it's design, it's engineering, it's installation, and then it's the commissioning and measurement and verification of the project over a long term. The legislation allows for up to 20 years, so it really is a long-term agreement between you and a solution provider to make this system work for you. Projects can be funded independent of the capital budget, and they're paid for entirely or in part by energy savings, and this is unique in Massachusetts, actually. In other states, they make you pay for a project 100% from energy savings, which these days with rising capital costs is actually quite difficult to do. But through this specific path in Massachusetts and this specific legislation, you're allowed to pay for projects partially by energy savings. So for example, you'll see me in a couple slides talk about how we've had communities replace roofs. Now, a roof isn't going to 100% pay for itself by energy savings, but everyone understands that a roof is a crucial part of the building envelope, and therefore by replacing a roof, you're tightening the envelope, you're making that building a little bit more efficient. So it's an avenue for getting you necessary and needed upgrades. This is a slide I actually pulled from the Department of Energy Resources website. It's their comparison of what they call the true cost of a project, which really comes down to time and money. So you'll see, this is a typical bid spec project from start to finish. Let's say you decide to do a project, you enter into a study first to see the feasibility, right? Could take anywhere from one to three months, you would hire a consultant to do this, they would come out, and then the product would be a high-level overview, right? Then, based off of this high-level overview, you decide to hire a design firm to create actual specifications and bids, right? Do an actual design. That takes probably somewhere between three to nine months, you hire a consulting engineer, most likely separate from who you hired for the design, and on and on. So you can see in this style of process, it's separate bids and separate procurements, it's separate avenues for funding and financing, and at the end of the day, it takes probably 24 months, you know, one to two years total. And you have additional costs of design, which is an upfront fee on the owner's project manager and contingency, right? Comparing that to performance contracting, the DOVR says it's all under one roof, it's all under one company, one point of contact, one purchasing contract, aside from financing, which can sometimes be separate if you allow to do additional financing. And those same costs end up being on kind of the stacked fees of engineering and architecture on top of each other, OPM fees, you know, and that, they do the project and they walk away, right? Whereas in this long-term agreement, long-term partnership, there's kind of an invested interest. And then lastly, fixed firm price. And I think, it's funny that Mr. McIntyre brought up the project that I presented at the Amule Institute last year, because that project, which was a $12 million project, was contracted right before COVID, meaning that we faced a significant amount of supply chain challenges, pricing challenges, and while it was incredibly difficult, I think for both parties because of the fact that it was just such a challenging time, Dr. Vieta, I think, would say and did say that it was $12 million when we started the project, and it was $12 million after the project. And even though there were significant challenges, there were increases, it was a fixed firm price, and we carried through on that, and we made sure at the end of the day that we stuck by our contract. So that's just one of the benefits to the comparison of these two. There is single-source accountability, like I said, in this partnership of a project, follow through on all of these stages. Whoever you select as your energy services provider would be working directly for you. They would be the ones to secure all the grants and incentives, they would be the ones to secure alternative funding and help you through that, and they would also be the ones to hire subcontractors, do the measurement and verification in any ongoing services that you would require. Obviously, I have TRAIN in there, but I'm here for purely educational purposes, and so I'm speaking on behalf of any, any energy services company that you work to choose to report with. Just talking a little bit about the flexible scope options as a part of this project, I really break them down into three separate buckets. The first bucket is renewable energy systems, which appeals to some people and doesn't appeal to others. But we've done biomass boiler plants for clean heating, we've done photovoltaic solar carports as a part of these projects. Sometimes they can extend and expand the scope of opportunities when you combine different buckets of savings. And I've also had people not touch bucket number one, so it's up to you. Bucket two is energy conservation measures. This is the bread and butter of an energy savings performance contract. It's anything from HVAC equipment and boiler plants all the way to building automation systems or controls, VFDs, transformers, and high-efficiency lighting. So some of those are kind of low-hanging fruit when it comes to energy savings, but also definitely impact and improve that indoor environment for students and teachers. And then lastly, which some people don't know about, is that you can handle some of these items that are typically handled as capital improvements through a performance contract, like roofs and windows. We actually were in, we had an energy management services agreement with a customer, we did two phases with them that were primarily buckets one and two, and they had mentioned that they were trying to do a roof, and that they received a price from the MSA at $6 million five years prior. And we, right after that, evaluated the roof, and we came back to them with a price of $3 million to do the same work, same scope of work. And so even if you take into account, you know, the 50% or whatever your reimbursement level is, sometimes it does make sense to take a different approach because, like I mentioned, the process, just it cuts out a couple of middlemen that typically add onto a project like that, just an option for you. Controls upgrade is usually one of the highest-selected options when people report with a performance contract. I think controls, and I think a lot of people in my industry would say that building automation systems are key to a properly ventilated, a properly cooled, a properly operated building and environment. So most controls upgrades, like I'm assuming you would consider would be a full integration into all of your existing equipment. into all of your existing equipment. It would improve the visibility of your systems, how they're currently operating, what problems are arising, hopefully before they actually become a problem, right? You would see an alarm for a valve not working that could potentially cause heating concerns before it actually causes the heating concern, right? So you can address that, and facilities would be able to pull up their phone and say, oh, I have an alert, this valve just went down, I can go run and go fix it now, or I can call someone to come and fix it, so that we're being proactive versus reactive. So that programming alerts and being able to access on multiple devices, having a single point of contact when you do report to the service provider is key. And then just specifically, a train offering is not only do we have control systems, and not only do we have control servicing, but we actually have a team that we call intelligent services that monitors your buildings 24/7, 365 days, and we collect data. And as you know, our world is pretty much moving into the future of data, right? So it's constant analytics on, okay, I'm realizing this room, I'm seeing trending that it's, you know, in a certain part of the day, it's at a peak or at a low, and how would I fix it? Okay, this system says that I can fix it by changing this set point at this specific time. So it can get really intelligent and get really creative about how to solve either some of these comfort problems or efficiency problems if you're having any. This is an example from local school district, just to show you different options for alternative This regional school district gained support for five different phases in a variety of ways. So this is to show you, one, that you can do multiple phases through a performance contract, all having different scopes of work, but also that you can finance them separately, independently, and differently. So they elected to move forward with the tax exempt lease purchase for the first three phases. The first phase was a small boiler replacement. The second phase was a very large energy conservation measure project that spanned multiple buildings. And then the third was the solar carports. So most of those first three were energy-focused projects, right? Renewable system, renewable energy systems and energy conservation measures. And then phases four and five were more capital-style projects, the roofs and the windows, that were supported via bond. So just to show you the different options, it matters not to any energy services company how you fund your projects, it's totally up to you. But I think I would say that any of us would be willing to walk through that process and show you how we work with other entities in the past. And this is just a visual I like to show about the 24/7 analytics, and it's funny, but I do think it's true. I've actually called some of my engineers, and they do, they've got six screens, they're just looking at data all the time, and it impresses me that they have the capability to kind of find hidden problems and bring them to light. Just a little bit about train before I get to the timeline and close is that most people think of train as an HVAC manufacturer, right? That's our bread and butter. We manufacture residential equipment, commercial equipment. But most people don't know that we have a contracting group, an energy services and contracting group, and that's where I'm from. Our organization has done, I think at this point, over $1.5 billion in projects completed to date nationally. Our local team here has done over $130 million. All of our people sit locally in the region that work on these projects, and we have 100% success rate, which means that that guarantee that's core to the process of performance contracting, my team has never missed. So the legislation actually reads that in the event of a guarantee miss, the energy services company has to write a shortfall check to you. And we've never had to do that, so it's a good sign. And I think traditionally, I think on average, we actually exceed our guarantee by about 13%. And it's not a savings shared between the two of us, it's 100% to the school. So any additional savings, that 13% flows directly to the building operators in the school. And the three main reasons I would say that people have selected train in the past is really the fact that we are a manufacturer. Most people, when they enter into a project like this, are looking for HVAC equipment and controls, and that is what we make. Since we have a factory and a direct line to that factory, we're actually able to pass through our factory direct pricing directly to our customers, instead of marking it up like a traditional ESCO would do. We have a very large base, a very large service base. We have technicians that are in customers' buildings quite literally every single day dealing with problems, both on the mechanical side and the control side. So the expertise related to our people is, I think, also one of the main reasons. And then I also mentioned our extensive experience in not only the region, but also Massachusetts with this specific legislation of 25A11I. All of our energy engineers, project managers, technicians, developers, all have direct experience working on a project like this. So then just to show you an example of timeline, I think this might be another slide that got slightly messed up, but to walk you through what it would look like, this is a sample that I pulled together. The first step is to issue an RFQ. So chapter 25A11I is a RFQ-based procurement, so it's qualifications only, there's no scope, there's no price. You're purely looking to evaluate a firm, an energy services company, based off of their experience, their project team, references from previous projects, the financial stability of their company. These are all things that are a part of the RFQ. It's a model on the DOVR's website, it's very easy to find, very easy to modify, very easy to submit sometime in January. Typical response can be anywhere from two to four weeks. So you could easily select an energy services company in January, again, or early February, depending on how quickly you're able to move. As soon as you select your energy services company, next step would be to execute the detailed audit agreement, also another model document from the DOVR. And the detailed audit is really just, I like to call it just a detailed energy audit, right? It's evaluating your HVAC systems, your control systems, your building envelope, how your buildings are operating, hearing from people who operate your facilities, what problems, areas are of note to the community, and hearing all of that and producing a detailed document letting you know what your opportunities are, in addition to a long document that's kind of like a manuscript, right? We also like to tack on to that what we call an ECM summary sheet, which is a menu list of items that's customizable, check-in, check-out, different projects, different ECMs per building. So lighting would be a scope in a row, and per building, it would be checked in as each option. And then you're able to kind of create the project of your choosing. So once the detailed audit is done, you have, the scope of improvements have been evaluated, you would then select your project and move forward with a firm contract, fixed firm price with a scope and guarantee. You could do that as early as April, because that development, that IgA typically takes about one to three months. And something to note, you have spent zero money through step one all the way to step six. There's no upfront fee. The only thing is that in step three with that detailed audit agreement, there's typically a breakup fee. The breakup fee is usually a cent per square foot, and it is paid only in the event that you do zero projects, that you move forward with nothing. Otherwise, it would be rolled into the total project, but it's not an upfront fee. So once you have a firm contract with scope and guarantee, you, next step would be to secure financing and then to execute the contract, which you could do as early as May. So once the contract is executed, you would start to mobilize, and whoever your partner is would be able to start implementing those facility upgrades sometime in the summertime. Depending on lead times and which projects you select, that timeframe can be a little bit flexible, but ideally, the best time to do work in schools naturally is when they're empty. So summertime is usually a big construction, we call it summer slam, in addition to breaks and any other empty times you have. And then after construction is complete, installation's done, you would maintain those systems, and we would guarantee the energy savings. So it's a combination of diligent review of the buildings and how it's operating, and also that guarantee partnered with it. So that's pretty much all I have.
When did you say the breakup fee comes into play? I didn't touch on it.
Step three with the detailed audit agreement, right there. The IgA detailed audit agreement, and it's typically a cent per square foot. It's not too much.
Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. And then lastly, just to summarize benefits, breaks into three categories, physical, social, environmental. You're addressing needed upgrades in the best possible way, utilizing any available incentives at the state and federal levels. You're getting guaranteed energy savings from your energy services company, and utilizing savings potentially to pay for the project over the long term. Socially, you're optimizing that indoor air quality, creating a safe environment, positively impacting students and teachers. And then lastly, environmental, you're measurably reducing utility consumption and emissions. And emissions is a bigger one these days with CO2, right? So that, and that's quantifiable, if anyone is curious. And that's all I had. Do we have any questions?
I have one question. The procurement process.
Yes.
Is it a competitive bid, or is there certain exemptions by the legislature as far as awarding the contract? You know, you get sole source or some, those type of contracts.
So it's an RFQ-based procurement. So the RFQ, which was in step one, would be submitted for a competitive bid onto the central register. You would receive responses from anyone. I've seen people get two to three, and I've also seen people get six to 10. So it really depends on how many you receive. And then you would evaluate those responses and select based off of our rating sheet. So it is a competitively bid process.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Two questions for you, and I think Patrick might have to help on one of them. So the first question, we talked about the operations and the electrical and all of that good stuff. And train procures all of that. Now, what happens 15 years, or 10 years down the road, or five years down the road, when some of the knobs stop working? Are they compatible to go elsewhere if you're not around anymore, if your company's not around? I just say this because I'm learning more about both of our buildings, and there's trouble where something has been installed five, six years ago, and now that company is no longer around, and now we have to buy a whole new system because it's not compatible, blah, blah, blah. So would that happen with your company?
So, no. Short answer, no. Train is an over 100-year-old company. $15 billion, I don't think we're going anywhere in the next couple of years.
So anything that you implemented would...
No, I mean, and we have a train parts store, and most other parts can be installed as well. I think if you're asking about the availability of parts, most parts are available wherever. We have other distributors that have the...
And when the computer system's like updated, you're able to do all of that and make sure it's compatible with all the other things that you put in to make our heating work, or whatever the case may be?
Yes, yeah. I mean, a control system would be evaluated for a couple of different, I think, levels, right? Typically, when we approach these projects, we do a good, better, best in what someone is looking for, right? If you select the good, you get good. If you select the best, you get the best, right? So there's different versions, I think, of solutions that you could implement. But if you were to select our best option, which includes integrating into every single piece of equipment and that has the visibility of every single issue, it would have full integration, which sounds like exactly what you're asking.
Yes. I don't think we'll probably go with that. It's probably too expensive, but it's an option. And the second question that I have is the solar project that we're having, how does this coincide with our solar project? Or are we picking one or the other? And I think this is where Patrick might have to jump in with this.
Yeah, so we look at the building. We look at the building alone, and we also look at the building and evaluate it with solar as a component, right? Your building's going to operate how it's operating, it's going to use energy, no matter whether you have solar or not. And your environment, your indoor environment, isn't impacted by the solar generation, right?
So we can keep these, because this other project is with another company, I think...
Yeah, yeah.
So they would work together.
We would work together. We wouldn't, it does not need to be an either-or.
Okay.
Like your automation and monitoring systems, once that solar system was in place, would monitor that data just like, because it's part of the building, it's part of the infrastructure?
Patrick, so you can... Yeah, so essentially, we're looking at these as two completely independent projects that won't interfere with one another. We can move forward with solar as we had planned, and we can move forward with this completely separate. The solar project has its own integration and management on that end, and a reminder if we move forward with that and when we move forward with that, we don't own that. That's a lease, we're just reaping the benefits of the solar savings. So the company that we're working with, they're completely managed, supervised, you know, repair, maintain that entire structure. So these are two separate things. I did talk to Morgan at the beginning about this to make sure that there was no conflict of moving forward with both, and we're in the clear.
We work with communities that also have separate solar as well. We just like to be aware of it, know how much you're paying for it, know how much of it you're getting, just the more information, the better, but it doesn't prevent anything. And typically, as a part of our projects, if you do incorporate solar, it is own your own, so it's even completely separate from that.
Thank you.
Can you talk about, you mentioned that you have, you know, techs that will come into your schools, but once you're in contract, which I would imagine the number of techs and availability would be based on the scope of your work, but can you kind of talk about how your techs will work with your, the school's staff, you know, like the janitor, you know, the facilities manager that we have here, and the others that we have on staff, cleanings, cleaning buildings, and monitoring buildings? How does that work?
During construction or post-construction?
I would say during, like, more like the maintenance phase, you know, the systems are up and running, and now I...
Post, yeah.
Yeah, post, yeah.
I would say that our technicians heavily rely on building facilities teams for their expertise on the buildings. So it's really a hand-in-hand process where our technicians want to be a resource to facilities managers in operating their buildings in the best way. Our technicians are pretty good at working with anyone that works at the facility level.
And one of the appealing pieces to me, again, which we discussed, you know, in our, we've had multiple meetings at this point, but there are maintenance plans that we could build into the project costs of this. There's training from the, again, we're not married to train yet, this has to go out to open competition, but if it were to be trained, or any of these vendors, there's training components of the systems we implemented to make sure our staff's up to speed. And then again, if we move forward with any sort of maintenance contract, a part of that, you know, we could be essentially hands-off, you know, you can elaborate on that if I'm misspeaking, but there's a combination of different routes we could go to make sure we're prepared, and we can maintain it beyond, you know, a handful of years, let's say. And just an FYI, too, you know, as we learn more about these buildings, AES, most of that HVAC equipment over there is 99% trained as is, you know, just some things have fallen through the cracks on the maintenance side.
Is it under warranty?
It was a great question. You got to ask, right?
So that just goes back to your comment earlier, they've been around, we've actually been in business with them, and, you know, through the RFQ process, you know, the biggest thing would be checking references, projects, things like that, and we'll see who has the superior portfolio at that point.
Yeah, again, it's a good, better, best situation again. We're completely flexible. You could elect to do zero maintenance with your energy services provider, you could elect to do all of your maintenance. It's more up to you on what you want us to handle versus what you have the capability for. But we're very well-versed in doing either-or. It's a 5% or a 99%, whichever works for you.
Thank you. This was very helpful. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me. Have a great rest of the night.
You too.
And Patrick, thank you. All right, I'm going to move on then. Next up, you have the Director of Technologies update. As you know, he's going to present every other month, so, you know, you can read about the savings. Our district is saving money because of his hard work and best practices, and I guess... And I guess, I just wanted to mention that our new website is up and running. We did notify you of that, and I want to thank Patrick Missler and, as well as Patrick McIntyre for their hard work on getting this up and running. But it's really a soft rollout right now, and then in September, we'll have a big launch. But we're getting used to it, and you know, it's, it's all clean data that you're seeing now. The links are working, et cetera. So if anybody sees anything that, you know, is questionable, just let us know, and we'll take a look at it. But it should be all up to date. Does anybody have any questions about that? All right.
Just great progress really being made in the technology space.
Absolutely.
And savings, and we're just becoming much really efficient here, so it's really great to see. Well done.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. All right, next, we have some policies. Our policy subcommittee has met, and we have a few policies to review tonight. The first one, there is no change in the policy, JH, student absences and excuses. So there's no change to that policy, but what we learned is that our handbook was not aligned, our handbooks at each school were not aligned to that policy. So tonight, I would be asking for a vote that the handbooks updated their policy to match and align with policy JH.
So moved. Wait. That's the end question.
Oh, we have to do the motion.
Yeah, so she made the motion. Can we go with that? No? All right. If I can make a motion, please, to approve updated handbooks regarding student absences from AES and FMS. I don't have the policy in the vote here. It's out of me.
It's JH.
Oh, yeah. No, it's not. Oh, yeah, JH.
But it would just be an amendment to each handbook, so I don't know if you want to take the vote separately, but the AES and FMS both made changes to their handbook, which the school committee originally voted on at the beginning of the year. So these are just two small amendments that align with the existing policy, no change in the policy.
Right. So do we have a motion, uh, do we have a second? A motion to move? Second? All right, and you had some questions, right?
So I took a look at the both handbooks, and they're, why are they not the same? Shouldn't they be worded exactly the same since it's, it seems that... They're not. And there, there are different ways of saying things regarding the absences and extracurricular activities, if a student is absent and unexcused and so on and so forth. I'm just wondering if it would be more efficient to just have the same policies, uh, the same handbook verbiage in both schools, since parents are going from one school to another? All of a sudden, we have to reread this all over again to figure out what, what the, you know what I mean, what the information is?
Yep, so what I would suggest then is we can go back and, because there's no change in the policy, and bring this back next month, and, you know...
If we could. I mean, does that, I mean, what is...
I think consistency would be good, frankly.
I mean, for this particular thing, because I know some things can't be consistent with an elementary school and a middle school, however...
But it follows the same.
We're following the same times. Yeah, and, yeah, if we could, that would...
That's fine. So we'll just, we'll update that for you for next meeting. That's no problem at all. Next one is BEDH. That has to do with public comment at school committee meetings. This is just a first reading. Basically, what the subcommittee decided to do was go align us with the MASC policy. So what I did in your packet is you will see our current policy, and with some slight changes for us to be aligned with the MASC policy, you see the new proposed policy. But this is the first reading, and then we'll do the second reading and the vote next month. Does anybody have any questions on that? Next, we have Policy GC, professional staff responsibilities. Again, this is the first reading, and I believe if you, if you open up that packet, the subcommittee wanted to add the, the section five in yellow. The subcommittee added classrooms should only be equipped with furnishings, materials purchased by or approved by the district. The entire rest of the policy is the same. So again, this is the first reading. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Did we ever get the information regarding the fire?
Not yet.
I can grab that. I'll get that. I'll get that for you. It's really easy. You just call the district manager, I was told. I'll give it a whirl.
Well, I, I can check with Kim because she was checking on that, but at the last I spoke to her, she hadn't gotten it yet, and that's why we were waiting on that information to have another policy subcommittee meeting.
And the request was going to the state or to the town?
State.
She was getting it from either this town or a surrounding town.
We can get it right from the state, I was told, so I'll just make a call. If I can't do it, I can't do it. If I can, great.
Okay. Just let me know.
Yep.
And send that to me.
Question on that. D, was there any discussion on, with the, with the teachers' union on, on that policy as far as whether it could be interpreted that it's some academic freedom issues involved by people, you know, bringing in certain types of, with their own curriculum, which may be very well, curriculum items, which may be very consistent with, you know, the general curriculum design, but it has, may be certain tailored to create more interest?
Yeah, so I think the intent of this particular section of the policy, we were really focused on furnishings. As you know, we had to do a clean-out at the elementary school, and what we found was there was a lot of furnishings, in some cases, not all cases, but in some cases where staff had brought in to the building, and some things weren't as easy to clean. So we just want it to be all district purchased. Even the curriculum, we want that. But as far as academic freedom, the teachers have academic freedom in terms of teaching standards while using the curriculum that we have, you know, outlined for them.
So, John, I think you're, you're saying that, you know, if a teacher wants to bring in, and I'm making this up like an abacus, like, it just needs to get approved by the...
By the principal.
By the principal. So they can bring whatever they want, as long as it's approved by the principal. Is that what it is?
Like, if they make a particular poster, let's say...
Correct.
You know, I don't think we're gonna micro...
We all use that stuff. It still do, right?
I think it's more like anchor chucks and furniture and things like that. Decorations.
With intrusions on academic freedom in schools, you know, very recently, you know, we should define and refine, you know, some of the issues concerning what, what teachers can, can do and not do, and so, you know, we don't run into some, some issues in the futures where, you know, we've gone down a road where some academic freedom and freedom of expression by teachers, which leads to good motivation on their part, is stymied. And I don't know whether this policy opens the door to that or whether it should be more refined and discussed.
I think it's more like they can't bring in a desk from home.
Right.
That is like a wooden desk because it's harder to clean versus a surface that's maybe laminate that is purchased for the purpose of being in a school setting, right? So there was certain furniture that teachers did bring in, and then we had asked them to remove. Even like carpets, you know, are they appropriate for the classroom, fire retardant, et cetera? So those are the types of things we're talking about in this particular policy, that we don't have an issue with a carpet in the classroom or a desk. It's just, we want it to be purchased and approved by the principal. Yeah. Okay, so that, that's the first reading on that one. The next two, H and I, under the agenda, these are more housekeeping issues. Policy DGA, we actually voted on that in October of 2022, and we had noticed in going through our policies that this particular one never got updated. So I just wanted to throw that out there again, that I think we all know that we changed from multiple signature warrants to one signature on the warrant. But if we could just have a formal vote, we want to push that through with MASC.
So we'll need a, if I could request a motion to approve the policy DGA for authorized signatures. So moved. Second. Any further discussion on that?
I think there was a second on that.
Yes.
I just want to make a comment on it, and I, and I hope that, you know, all expenditures far as the listings are available to the school committee.
Absolutely.
Always here at every meeting.
Okay, Rod?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Okay, so then we're on to policy DJE.
So you did take the vote?
Yes. Oh, all those in favor, sorry.
I am, sorry.
Just checking. All right, and the last one, policy DJE, which is procurement requirements. Back again, October in 2022, there was no vote taken on this one, but Mr. McIntyre informed the members that the price quotation threshold for school districts will increase from $50,000 to $100,000. You probably recall that. So the law changed to really help municipalities and school districts streamline the procurement process for the amounts under $100,000. So we want a formal vote on this so that we can just move forward. But again, we've already talked about this. It's just, I wanted to bring this to the forefront again.
Request a motion to approve policy DJE procurement requirements. So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. So we'll have, invite our business manager to report.
Sure, President Downing, School Committee, thank you for having me again tonight. Again, I'm gonna try to kind of peel through this, but stop me for any questions. I know it's been a long agenda, so FY24 budget, still on track. You know, I carved out, we, we have some expenses here or there that we need to move around, but in the grand scheme of things, we're looking good. I carved out the high school expenses as Mr. Howe-Crawf requested. Not much activity there at this point. Fairhaven got us their tuitions, but we were spending time verifying residency for the students we're being billed for. We just finally got through that and are processing that bill this month, so that'll, that'll hit next month. New Bedford still has not given us a list of individuals or tuition bills, so there's nothing there. And then Bristol-Aggie, we've, we've expended our 50% tuition bill to them, and we've encumbered the remainder. So that's most of the activity you'll see in the high school lines. That's, that's the 2024 budget. More pertinent is the fiscal '25 budget. So the department heads were all assigned, you know, their departmental budgets due to the superintendent business office on 12/20. You know, everyone was pretty timely with those, and in the next two weeks, we're gonna go through those with a fine-tooth comb, get them down to some comfortable numbers, meet with each department head individually, so that we can show that progress to Budget Subcommittee on January 23rd, which is two weeks out, I believe, and then likely present our superintendent's recommended budget to school committee on February 6th, so next school committee meeting. I didn't draft up a formal timeline this year like we did last year. It seemed to have so many moving pieces, so kind of want to get a feel for how this goes this year. But long story short, what I'm aiming for, like I said, is the superintendent's recommended budget in February, and then from there, we'll see what sort of changes, comments, questions we have to, to maneuver our budget, or, you know, see where the revenues come in from the state, and so on and so forth. And then whether it's ready by March, April, May, we're not gonna vote, I'm gonna recommend not to vote to approve it until that very last meeting before town meeting, just in case anything does need to change, it gives us that flexibility. And we'll talk more about that, you know, through the budget process and with Budget Subcommittee. But I didn't want you to think of neglecting a timeline or a plan of any sort. You know, this is gonna be an interesting year, interestingly selectively, with what sort of funding we're gonna receive from the state. I don't know if you guys caught my little bullet point on this report, but essentially, everyone's sending out a alarm, saying, read state revenue data and projections with amplification of the words uncertain and heavily qualified. So, you know, my guess is as good as everybody else's at this point.
Fire and remistone again.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like, and we know our fixed costs that are gonna be increasing. So again, we're gonna, we're gonna have to be pretty strategic with this budget, and it's gonna take some, some work. Any, any questions on FY25 or the process or where we're at with anything there?
I just want to point out, if you could just mention that our transportation contract is up, which is going to be a big...
Yeah, so I think I did mention it last school committee meeting, and I'll, I'll say it as many times until we get the number, but our, our transportation contract's up, you know, at the end of this year. We're gonna go out to open bid for that, hopefully by the end of this month. As we've seen in the past, we get one response out of all the companies, and I've had preliminary conversations with that company just to kind of put things into perspective, and they're saying, anticipate a 30 to 40% increase in our contract, so...
Is there any, I know we, we probably have talked about this before. Is there anything we can do or any different approach we can look at to try to solicit more options and more bids? I know we talked about different buses last time.
You changed the year.
So as far as our contract goes, I think it's favorable for open competition in the sense that we're not putting constraints on it to, to kind of narrow down to certain vendors. But through the process, I mean, the whole idea is it goes to the central registrar's office, it goes in the newspaper, it gets posted to our physical bulletin boards at all the offices. I, I think it's just the nature of the, the industry of transportation. They all sort of draw their sand, lines in the sand, and know, know where not to, to bid and where to bid, and we're kind of at that expense.
Two years ago, we had three, two or three years ago, we actually had more than one offer.
Yeah, it was a three, right?
And that was fantastic. And that's when we said no to the flat noses, as long as they had the arm. So have, have we talked about, you know, like, maybe making the buses a little bit older or anything like that? Will that make a difference? So you don't think so?
So it will do more harm than good, I think. I think we're in a good spot, but you, you know, you get into maintenance issues, and then if a bus breaks down, then we can't deliver students on time. Now we run into teaching and learning. There's pros and cons. You know, we're looking at the insurance thresholds, and if we can lower that to have some savings. And, you know, through the process, I, I will notify, you know, my rolodex of transportation companies that I can get ahold of to say we're going out to bid.
You roll it up?
Yes. So, yes, that's, again, part of the budget. This is gonna be a trying time.
Can I make one other comment?
Sure.
I know we don't have the exact session tonight, but I'm gonna state, not more, ask an obvious question. I presume we're gonna reprioritize or take a look at some of the things like safety that we've been talking about and how that flows through the, the budget, because it's been a little bit since we talked about it.
It's gonna be talked about in the subcommittee.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I won't go too far into it because of the nature of the topic, but what we have discussed is still being investigated. You know, we talked about a bid for a certain project that's still on track to, to go out soon, just to get a number of what the expense will be. And then we do have the other projects behind the scenes in the works that are gonna help with our safety and security.
And conversations still have to be made at the town level as well.
I totally understand. I know we've had a lot happen. There were, there were other issues we've been dealing with, but I just want to make sure that we keep looking at it diligently and keep everything forward.
Yep, absolutely. All right, so I'll, I'll proceed to facilities. Over winter break, we were able to continue to clean, you know, our schools and keep them up, up to snuff. A part of that, we talked about equitability in our buildings, and, you know, we did the HVAC, or the ventilation in AES, let's do it at FMS. Were able to complete that over winter break, so, you know, we can all breathe air, you know, nicely, I guess, but I don't know where I was going with that. But, you know, our vents are clean, so at both schools. So we're gonna get that on a schedule, make sure we maintain that every two to three years, as recommended by the industry. In addition, you know, with the help of our friends at Kushner Fairhaven Basketball, we resurfaced both gym floors. Again, that's just a top coat and, and a nice, you know, re-oiling. It's not down to the paint and the lines, but, you know, everybody appreciates it. I know we've heard from both gym teachers, youth basketball, things are, you know, a great, thinks a great deal of it, and now we have our middle school sports. They just had their first games on the floor, and they get to enjoy the new floors, too. So we'll, we'll try to keep that up annually. And then along with the pres- uh, along with the meeting and the presentation that was earlier, the EMS procurement. So, um, I hope that presentation was valuable to you guys. I know it was a lot of information. Um, but long story short, we brought that same information to Steering Committee, which, as you know, is made up of board of selectmen, you know, school committee rep, finance committee, you know, other team members, union representatives. And we're gonna go that method of, um, procuring an EMS service to see where we land. Worst-case scenario, we get a, you know, manuscript, that's still Morgan's language, a manuscript of information about both of our buildings, our systems, specs, you know, what's working, what's not. And if we don't move forward with anything, we have a breakup fee that essentially will cost us the same amount as auditing that one HVAC system through the other environmental groups. Um, so I hope to have those documents, the D O R, as soon as this week. We have to wait fifteen days, hopefully less, for them to approve it, and then we can post, um, two, four weeks, however many we want. Uh, you know, probably gonna err on the shorter end of things, so we can move forward with it and get the documents together that we need, um, potentially for town meeting in the spring. But I am excited about that, and I think there's gonna be a lot of valuable information we'll learn about our, our, our buildings and our expenses in the future. Another note, uh, we did receive, I know we've been in relationships with AYSA and AFBL as far as rental facilities, and we've negotiated contracts with them. We finally received both of those contracts from General Counsel, standard language from past years. The fees that were agreed upon, those were left with, um, Shepherd and Downing to sign on behalf of the School Committee tonight. This is operational, so no vote, but I just wanted to be transparent about that.
It's, they're all done? The contracts already designed?
Yes.
Record time compared to the other ones? Fantastic.
Great.
That's great to hear. No, literally, the negotiations has been painful in the past.
Yeah, I think we finally have it, though, that, um.
Everybody's in order and in their place.
Everybody, yeah.
Great.
And honestly, fairness to both organizations, it's been nothing but a pleasure to work with, you know, either president of those groups. Uh, you know, we're in constant contact about what's working, what's not working, what they need to do better, what we need to do better, and, and it's been more pros than cons, so.
Great. Thank you very much on that.
Yep.
For everybody who votes.
Um, food service, again, you have your numbers there in the packet. I won't go over them, but, um, you know, things are looking great as far as, you know, meal counts go. Last month, we talked about CEP and how we were obligated to adopt it. Um, I, I got further information that I, I promised. There was no required vote by School Committee. Again, we, we are kind of mandated into this, and the reimbursement will not change. Um, because of the way the state was making up the difference between universal free lunch, we'll receive the same allotment based on our mail counts every month, CEP or regardless. It just passes the buck to the federal reimbursement side a little bit more, so. Long story short, it saves our state governments some money so that they have a little bit of freedom to hopefully give it to us somewhere else. And then positive note, you know, with all our goals, Shelley Mello, who's been working really hard as the Food Service Director, um, we've gone over our goals that we presented last June, and we can check off, um, another accomplishment on that. We've created our capital equipment replacement plan for both schools. Um, we have costs for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four year if we start replacing them. And then the industry kind of guidelines was to, to give it a five to eight percent increase over the next few years. So along with the local budget, we're gonna build a food service budget, and with that budget, we're gonna build into how we can replace this equipment. Um, over time, at a rate we can afford it, you know. I know we have some money in that fund, but we don't want it to replenish it all and then hit a hardship. You know, we have to have a plan with that, so, um, this was step one. Step two was the budget. Step three is kind of combining the two, and we'll have a nice plan over the next handful of years to, to make sure our equipment's up to snuff.
And the gourmet chicken patties are somewhere in this.
Gourmet chicken patties are somewhere in there.
We still working on the food?
So, so, yes, so, um, you know, we did, we did some scratch cooking for Thanksgiving, so that was, that was a positive. Uh, we've had some turnover in the departments that's kind of strayed us off tap a little bit, but we have taste tests, we have taste tests that was another goal lined up, and we're talking about different things that, you know, hopefully the kids enjoy and appear.
Be a little more healthier.
Yeah, and, and we'll go from there. Again, everything's healthy. We're, everything abides by the USDA guidelines, so. We're healthy, but we wanna be a little more versatile.
Okay.
Um, and then transportation, so I just, you know, we already talked on that. But our contract's up. We're expecting significant increases, potentially, you know, three hundred forty to four hundred sixty thousand, four hundred sixty, a hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, so that's, that's gonna be difficult to overcome, and that's all I have.
Yeah, uh, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So we have some dedications outlined there. Um, we have no.
You have any School Committee reports?
Oh, we do have School Committee reports. Does anybody have anything to report?
Yeah, I, I just have a suggestion.
Sure.
We're gonna, um, when, when Dr. Bailey gets back, probably we'll discuss it. Um, the other day, the, uh, it was on the news that a nine-year-old student from, uh, Hudson, Mass, uh, was injured by a fallen tree while she was at a bus stop, you know, coming to school. In light of that, I, maybe we, uh, just make a, a suggestion to the town administrator by a superintendent that, um, the town, I know the tree warden and Department of Public Works uh, views, uh, the, uh, trees in areas where our bus stops are to see if there are any potential dangers of, of trees falling, of branches falling, and whether, you know, whether those trees would have to be removed or move the, uh, the, you know, this bus stop maybe two hundred feet. Um, and we can supply them with the list of bus, you know, bus stops, so they, they can view them as a safety factor.
Yeah, it sounds reasonable. Um, did, you probably didn't catch that.
I did, no, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Do you wanna just briefly repeat what you said?
I'll repeat it, but I, uh, uh, thank you for your diligence. The, uh, the, in Hudson, Mass, uh, it was just the other day, a student, a nine-year-old student uh, was at a bus stop, and, and a tree, tree fell down and injured her. Um, so I'll make a suggestion that we contact the town administrator to engage the town, uh, tree warden and the Department of Public Works to review all, you know, the bus, the area of the bus stops to see if there are any potential problems with the trees, um, in that area, you know, those, that, that vicinity. And whether it take just moving the bus stop two hundred feet or whether they should, you know, take the trees down, 'cause it would be a public safety factor.
And I would, I would add to that, that if anybody, um, any families see an issue with a tree, definitely call the town, um, to get that taken care of. But yes, I can send off an email on behalf of the School Committee.
I may, I may add to that to say perhaps they should take a look around the campus of the school where kids may be out playing and take a look at trees that could come down in, you know, in that area as well.
I will do that.
Good suggestion. Thanks, Mr. Howcroft.
Thank you.
Any other, um, School Committee reports this evening? All right, then, um, we have, we have no executive session this evening. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, February sixth, here at the library, so if there's nothing further, I can motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn on the second.
And we will call the launch. Yes.
Mrs. Goine.
Yes, Mr. Goine.
Yes.
Mr. Howcroft?
Yes.